Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the County Council meeting. The exciting follow-up to the county budget session. Before we start anything tonight, I want to let everybody know, we'll say this a couple of times tonight, because of the huge crowd that we're expecting next week for a conditional use permit issue, we are moving next week's meeting, and we are meeting next week, by the way, not the second, in December, we meet the first and the third Monday of the month, so we can get the budgets done, and the county executive has the 10 days required before the end of the year. So, our meeting next week will be at the Family Arena. Woo-hoo! We're going upscale. How about that? I've always wanted to do an arena tour. We finally got the opportunity to do that. All right, so with that being said, I know Chuck, it's not going to get any better, it's just how it's going. We were going to start with our invocation tonight. I want to say a big thanks to Brad Harris and Bible Baptist Church. Believe it or not, we actually have a hard time getting people to come pray for us from time to time, and these folks at Bible Baptist are always willing to step up and come lead us to prayer when we start our meeting, so I appreciate you guys very much for being here. Councilman Hollander is going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand and remove your caps.
Let's pray, may we? Lord, as we come out of a week of Thanksgiving, we're thankful for all your goodness to us, and I'm thankful for all those who serve in this county, and, Lord, just bless them and their families, and I know they take time out, even of their own schedules, to do the work that is best for us in this county as we go about our ways. And, Lord, I just pray you bless this meeting, and may your blessing be on each and everyone here throughout the holiday season. I thank you that we enjoy it here in St. Charles in a special way, just down the street, and we're grateful for all you've done for us, and we'll be ever grateful for how you provide for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated, please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer. Councilmember John White.
Here.
Wanted to make a special note here, we just found out earlier this evening that Councilman Klinghammer had a sudden death that happened in the family today, so he was called out of a meeting, and prayers and thoughts go with the Klinghammer family, but just keep them in your prayers, if you would. So, there's a lot of great stuff that's going on in the county, and we get an honor to hear about one of those tonight. Scott Drocknick from Workforce Development is here, doing a fantastic job, by the way, as always. I don't know if you're going to work in a plug for that 1.8 percent unemployment rate, but...
I was until you mentioned it.
There you go, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but Scott's going to talk about Hour of Code, so appreciate you being here.
Very good, and again, thank you for mentioning the 1.8 percent unemployment. It's one of the lowest in the state of Missouri, lowest in the region, and hasn't been this low since 1999.
Wow.
So, we're at this time of the year when we're actually talking about Hour of Code. This is an international program that's been going on since 2013. Over 300 million students and people around the world have participated. It's always the first week of December, and this is our third year of celebrating it here in St. Charles County. It happens at many schools, many businesses, but we've been doing it at the County Workforce and Business Development Department since December 2015. Tonight, as part of that proclamation that the county executive's going to be reading in a moment, we always try to wrap these proclamations and these activities in people who are actually participating and making a difference in this regard. And so, tonight, we are honoring Amy Robb. She is a computer teacher at Wentzville School District. She is here, her principal is here, the superintendent is here, and so I'm going to let her speak a little bit more about how she is using Hour of Code and impacting everybody from kindergarten, children on up, to prepare the 21st century workforce group.
And where is Amy? Amy, come on up for a moment.
Thank you for your time. The 21st century skills that our young people are going to need when they enter the workforce is very vital and ever-changing, and coding is one of those things that we really need to introduce to them. So, we start in the Wentzville School District at kindergarten, and we use code.org as a great resource. It has wonderful resources that really break down coding, even to the little kids. So, I teach kindergarten through 3rd grade, and this is my second year of doing more than just one hour of code. We've actually done six to seven weeks of it, and the kids just are so enthusiastic with it. And so, we're excited. This year, we're starting out next week, and then in the 4th quarter, we're going to continue and improve our curriculum, and they're just really excited to do it K-12 in the school district, so.
Well, thank you for all you're doing with the kids, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thanks for making the time to be here tonight.
The county executive's going to read a proclamation that was put together, and at your spots, you'll see two flyers where we've put out information about the Hour of Code activities that we're doing, as well as the IT meetup that'll be happening down the hill at the OPO starters.
Amy, congratulations. It's a proclamation, "Whereas the annual Hour of Code Week scheduled for December 4th through 10th, 2017 is a global movement that has served nearly 300 million students and people of all ages in more than 180 countries since starting in 2013. And whereas the Hour of Code calls attention to the fact that computer science helps nurture problem-solving skills, logic, creativity, and career readiness for students, adults, and people of all ages. And whereas the Hour of Code is supported by an impressive coalition of partners, including Boys and Girls Clubs of America, Microsoft, Apple, Amazon, and the College Board. And whereas there will be more than 200,000 Hour of Code 2017 events around the world, including those at the Missouri Job Center in St. Charles County and elsewhere in the community. And whereas one of the many local educators who is a role model for helping prepare the workforce of tomorrow is Amy Robb, a computer teacher at Heritage Primary in the Wentzville School District. And whereas Ms. Robb is a Google-certified educator who mixes fun learning with technical skills to teach computer literacy and coding to kindergarten through 2nd grade students during the Hour of Code Week and throughout the school year. And whereas Ms. Robb is diligently working to be the spark that ignites STEM interest in local students as early as possible, she is a valued resource to her colleagues and is popular with her students and their families. And whereas classrooms around the community like Ms. Robb's, and other locations like the Missouri Job Center in St. Charles County, will be hosting a variety of special activities during the Hour of Code Week 2017 to promote interest in computer skills and help prepare the 21st century workforce of St. Charles County. Now therefore be it proclaimed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And we want to honor Amy Robb, computer teacher, Heritage Primary, in the Wentzville School District, and congratulate you and wish you well in the future, and also good luck to your students as they pursue their careers. Now, if I have trouble with my computer skills, can you do tutoring?
If it's at the level of K-5, yes.
That's about the level I'm on, so I may be calling you.
I'm learning with the kids.
Why don't we go up here? Do you want Dr. Kane and...
Dr. Kane, you want to come out?
Superintendent, Dr. Kane, and I think the principal at your school, and Amy's husband.
About that.
Right behind you.
Smiling face.
Number four, step forward.
Thank you very much.
Hats off to Wentzville School District, hats off to Dr. Kane with the explosion that is going on in the Wentzville School District. I don't know, I heard you say about a year ago that you guys were adding like 100 students a month, or something like that. Is it better than that now, or you still in that growth mode?
We're still in the growth mode, not quite 100 students a month, but we're still in a place of growth, so just trying to be as proactive and responsible as we can with the growth.
Well, we appreciate everything you guys are doing, so thank you very much, thank you, Amy, for doing that. Scott, do you have anything further?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. All right, so let's move on to, is Amanda here? There she is. Let's talk Transportation Improvement Program 2018 to 2020.
Okay.
I see that we have a couple of quick notes to go through tonight.
Quick notes, yeah. You don't need to go through those tonight, we're ahead of my actual ordinance because I got pushed up, I did not want to present at the Family Arena. So, I'm here tonight, a little ahead of my actual bill, so.
Well, if I could remind the council inside your packet, if you want to follow along, you have this PowerPoint that's inside your tip packet, if you want to pull that out, you can follow along in case, I know the screen gets far away, so.
Perfect.
The stage is yours, ma'am.
Okay. So, yes, I'm going to present on the 2018 to 2020 Transportation Improvement Plan, as recommended by the road board. This year's road board members are listed here. As always, we thank them for their time and commitment, they are great volunteers. Our priorities for the road board, per the county ordinance, are newer arterial roadways, or improvements to existing arterials, congestion mitigation, safety improvements, and economic development enhancement projects. This year's timeline, we had solicitation back in January through May, scoring took place in June, the presentations were given by the cities in June and July, we ranked the projects and scored them in July, public input was given in August and September, and road board recommendations were made in September. Since 2008, the county's half-cent transportation sales tax has provided over $250 million in county funding to construct over $400 million in projects. With changes in the funding, the county funding percentage has varied by year from as little as 47% to as much as 88% of total project cost, with a 10-year average of 62%. This year's tip provides just over $15 million in county funds to construct over $25 million in improvements, so a funding percentage of just over 60%, kind of staying in that range. So, this is an overview of the applications we received this year. We had 23 applications, and they kind of went through every category that I listed, so that's just listed out there. With the scoring and project selection this year, we started to try to get a little more into data-driven analysis. This is something, hopefully, you're going to see improvements in year-on-year from my department. So, we started looking at data for pavement conditions more closely, looking at crash data, looking at travel times and delay. We have a new travel demand model, an updated model, that gives us projections of new roadways, so we can look and really kind of hone in on the best projects for the money we're spending, and be selective, and get a good return on our investment, so. This is the tip project map, it's hard to see, but the projects in green are those that were recommended by the road board, those in yellow were additional applications, so from those projects that we mentioned before, 16 were recommended by the road board, so these are just a breakdown of those by type, and then I'll just go through each of those real quickly. So, new roads and arterial road improvements, there's approximately four lane miles of new roadways in this year's tip. That's David Hokel Parkway, Phase 1B, which is a county highway project out near, or as part of South Point Prairie, it's just south of the new interchange coming in. Route 364 interchange at Gudermouth Road will be a new interchange by county highway, that's actually a supplemental application, they were just approved for design last year, so this year, we got them the rest of their funding to match some federal funds they got. And then approximately five lane miles of improved arterial roadways, including Younger Men Road Bridge replacements. Again, that was actually also a supplemental project, they had to add some scope, so it was an old project, and we just added some additional funds for some added scope items that they had. And South River Road was also some additional scope items to add a fifth, or add pavement for a 5th lane, which will be used in the interim as a bike lane, or bike lanes on each side of the roadway for safety purposes. Congestion mitigation projects, on average, these saved over 1 minute per vehicle in the afternoon peak hour delay. Actually, that first one, they have rescinded their application, so that's no longer supposed to be on there, I don't know how this got messed up. Lake St. Louis Boulevard at I-70 Roundabout is an interchange project, at the interchange out there to add a roundabout. And then the I-70 Outer Roads Phase 1 is a supplemental for the Outer Roads project that is set for construction next year, they just had some additional items they needed to cover as well. An Elm Street and Harden Middle School traffic signal is a signal at the school to eliminate a stop sign that flips back and forth right now.
Doesn't sound very safe.
No, not at all. So, safety projects, the only one we had is the systemic safety improvements for the city of St. Charles. These are crash reductions, or will lead to crash reductions utilizing low-cost safety improvements. This is something that we're going to look at more next year, and encourage this on a county-wide basis. We may even apply for federal funds ourself, they got 80% federal funds on this, so we're going to start trying to do these kind of projects more. Studies, these studies will provide analysis for local road improvements based on the outcome of the I-70 Pell Study and proposed new development, so Stanford Overpass Study and Hawx Ness Drive Connection to Veterans Memorial Parkway Study, those are just two things we think need to be looked at. Bridge projects, these are replacing structurally deficient bridges on the county roadway system, Seaburger Road Bridge and Nam Road Bridge. And miscellaneous projects are providing pre-construction activities for future significant construction projects. These are all in the western portion of the county, which is just growing so quickly they kind of can't keep up with funding full projects, so they're trying to get ahead by funding design and land acquisition ahead of actual construction. So, we have Bryan Road and West Terra Lane, and I-70 Interchange Design in O'Fallon, US-61 West Outer Road Extension Phases 2 and 3 design for Wentzville, and David Hokel Parkway and Wentzville Parkway South land acquisition for Wentzville. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? I will take that as no, so thank you very much for coming and making your presentation. Seeing that, we will move on to conditional use permits. Bill for Perfection Final Passage, Bill Number 4532, which is Conditional Use Permit 17-13. I had a note that this bill needs to be tabled due to the fact that we didn't have the final fact and finding completed to that.
That is correct.
So, I would entertain a motion to table this bill.
Motion.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, we will table this one until the next meeting, sorry about that holdup, hopefully we'll get that one done soon. Which will move us on to a public hearing, the abandonment of the portion of Old Guthrie Road. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Be nice if the Assistant County Counselor wouldn't make comments when I get up to speak, I don't really appreciate that disrespect. But anyways, it has been brought to my attention that there may be more than one property owner adjoining this possible, leaving or leaving this dedication of public right-of-way. I want to make sure that any adjoining property owners to this abandonment of this property, that they either split it 50/50, or that there makes some accommodation to contact each adjoining property owner to make sure that there's some type of process or compromises worked out. So, I'd like to see it divided equally to any adjoining property owners to this abandonment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this issue tonight during the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this, and we will move on to public comments. Carol, who was our first speaker tonight?
I have one, Mr. Deanoff.
Mr. Deanoff, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Member of the County Council, Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. First of all, I'd like to extend my grievance and condolences to the Klinghammer family for their loss. I think it was a blow to the councilman himself, it's not fun for somebody to go through that, so I hope that everybody will back him up and make sure that we're there to be of support to them and his family. I need to weigh in on the recommendation for the election authority. There's a current position of a count finance clerk, it is nowhere near full-time capacity for processing of checks and income and distribution of expenses. I'd like that this council eliminate that position and move all responsibilities to the Department of Finance, this is a clear duplication of services, and this position clearly is not needed at the election authority. Continued, again, disruption of council members and sidebar conversations, another example was Mr. Cronin at the budget hearing. When a citizen or somebody is making a presentation, in this case, another elected office holder, it's a clear violation of the council promulgated rules and the council code of conduct. Now, only people can see when I'm speaking on this side, but people here in the audience can see when council members are rude and disrespectful in speaking on that side, it's a shame. Mr. Elam, your cutting off of speakers is inhumane, unprofessional, and acting like a hypocrite, just so you can rush home to your comfy couch in Darton Prairie, all while you are earning $1,250 a meeting in salary, medical benefits, and pension for you and your family. That's $21,500 annually. People take the time to come up here because we care about our county, you need to listen to us in a professional, caring manner. The chief, when I requested the statistics, has not responded to me in over two years, since the creation of the split of law enforcement duties. Chief Dave Todd has no idea if he has the proper amount of certified law enforcement officers with our ever-growing county residential population. Our current population of municipal residents is 304,000, our unincorporated county residents is 121,000. Why can't the $70,000 public information officer that has the tasks of, do the task also plotting crimes, rather than creating a whole new position and a whole new pay schedule? Instead of posting few and far between posts on Facebook and Twitter? I think this would be a much good exercise, as a much well steward of our taxpayer money, rather than wasting it on a new created position. That public information officer is one of, I believe, a staff of nine or 10, which I would be recommending that we cut that office, because you say that we're running out of money as the county government.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Deanoff, but that does expire your three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Elam.
Thank you for taking time to speak with us tonight. That wraps up public comments for this evening. On to oral report from the county executive.
Nothing to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Elman, that moves us on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda tonight?
Move to accept, second.
Move to accept in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The consent agenda is approved. That brings us up to Resolution 1714.
Resolution 1714, sponsored by Joe Cronin, Mike Elam, Terry Hollander, and Mike Klinghammer, a resolution requesting the relocation of opioid treatment services to an appropriate location within St. Charles County, and requesting the Director of the Department of Mental Health deny certification of the Campus Drive location.
Does anyone have any questions or comments that they'd like to make upon this? Yes?
Did, I assume this is in St. Charles, or?
It is.
It is, it is not in the city of St. Charles.
Well, it's in the county, sorry.
It's in the unincorporated area.
Surrounded by the city.
So, do we have this on our zoning?
It meets the zoning. Councilman Klinghammer requested this, he and Councilman Hollander have been monitoring this very closely. As a medical treatment facility, it meets the zoning, it was one space short on its parking, but I believe they restriped to meet that. The concern really is not the existence in the county of an opioid treatment facility, it's really been around the nature of the neighborhood, and we've had several departments doing a great deal of due diligence on this matter, including the councilman. And I think from the discussion that he had with me, that what he would want to tell you is, is that his concern is the location, for two reasons. One is it's directly across the street from a childcare facility with largely the same drop-off times. If you're familiar with the Campus Drive area, it's a fairly congested area, this building's in a U shape, it has very little space out front, so their open times for dosing are going to be 5:15 to 10:45, that's pretty much a large cross sample with when those children are being let off by their parents at daycare across the street. And during the school year, you've also got school buses. Secondly, from the information we've gotten about how this provider does elsewhere, when they are in a light industrial office park area, they're, they get very good reviews from their communities. But they are in St. Louis County in a similar type neighborhood where they're right up against residential, and there are some things, as recited in the resolution, that are inherent with people who try to hang on to those who are trying to get treatment through this type of facility. And, you know, the neighborhood immediately adjacent is such that this could be very harmful. And so, I know you didn't actually ask me, Councilman, but I know Councilman Klinghammer especially has really been working on this very hard, and so I wanted to make sure you knew those were the concerns he had brought to us.
I guess my question would be, though, is, I haven't, I mean, I'm pretty far from here, so I'm not saying that I would have heard anything about this, but I haven't. So, I don't think, in any, nobody would want this kind of thing around their neighborhood, but I'm concerned that we're trying to fight the opioid epidemic, but yet we're not willing to really do this, that's why I'm a little concerned about this, that we're, are we really, are we being hypocritical? Are we actually, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Everyone has indicated that there are a number of spaces very close to this that are in that more light industrial or former retail areas that would have been highly appropriate for this, and that they would be extremely supportive of certification at those locations.
Mr. Hollander.
Yeah, I don't think we're, you know, casting a blind eye on the need for opioid treatment. I think what we're doing is attempting to point out that this just is not a good location. It's, you know, the neighborhood, the traffic, the parking, it just doesn't seem to work. And at the same time, I think we're all, you know, cognizant of the fact that they're, you know, that we're in need of these type of facilities in the county.
I would tell you, I'm in the Greater St. Charles Chamber of Commerce, so my district, out at my big comfy couch in Darton Prairie, doesn't hear a lot about this.
I gotta get a crouch like that, too, by the way.
You do, but, they're very nice, but, I would tell you, I've gotten a number of people who have reached out to me about this, and saying, "It's not a bad idea, it's needed, but putting it across from a daycare facility is not ideal." So, there are other places that we could put that, other than this. So, that's kind of where the rub is, would that be fair? County Executive?
Mr. Chairman, just to add, just to add a couple of things, the statute, they are required to get a, to get a permit from the Department of Mental Health, and one of the requirements for this department to issue that is they show community support. And they have tried to get that, as far as I know, no one has been able to accommodate them on that.
Right.
We're simply making it clear, and of course, we had the police chief do some research on this, he's basically given us an opinion. I talked to the Drug Court Commissioner about methadone treatment generally, he said, "That's not the preferred method of treatment that they use," which doesn't mean it isn't a good treatment, but, I think, again, it's not, it's not what it is, it's how it's run and where it's located. And I would certainly encourage you to pass the resolution. And I would certainly encourage you to pass the resolution.
Any further questions?
No, I was just asking.
It's all good. Any further comments? With that, I'd ask you to read the resolution. Call and roll.
A resolution requesting the relocation of opioid treatment services to an appropriate location within St. Charles County, and requesting the Director of the Department of Mental Health deny certification of the Campus Drive location. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Resolution 1714 passes. We'll move on to bills for final passage, starting with Bill 4533.
Bill Number 4533, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 17-11.
Any questions or comments about 4533? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 17-11. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill Number 4533 passes. Move on to Bill Number 4535.
Bill Number 4535, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by Ordinance 16-104 for a position within the St. Charles County Police Department.
Any questions or comments on 4535? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by Ordinance 16-104 for a position within the St. Charles County Police Department. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 4535 passes. Move on to Bill Number 4536.
Bill Number 4536, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by Ordinance 16-104 for a position within the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by Ordinance 16-104 for a position within the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill Number 4536 passes. We will move on to Bill Number 4537.
Bill Number 4537, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by Ordinance 16-104 for a position within the St. Charles County Information Systems Department.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by Ordinance 16-104 for a position within the St. Charles County Information Systems Department. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Bill Number 4537 passes. On with that, to Bill Number 4538.
Bill Number 4538, an ordinance amending Section 410.370 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development ordinances regarding street pavement requirements.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending Section 410.370 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development ordinances regarding street pavement requirements. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill Number 4538 passes. On to Bill Number 4539.
Bill Number 4539, an ordinance declaring a portion of Guthrie Road to be abandoned and vacated.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Mr. Cronin?
Despite what the speaker said tonight, there is no controversy on this. Mr. Hefner had reached out to the adjacent landowner and had no interest in pursuing the vacation, so county's getting some needed right-of-way out of it, and it's actually a larger area than what the portion we're vacating, and all the affected landowners have been contacted, and they're good with everything else.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance declaring a portion of Guthrie Road to be abandoned and vacated. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill Number 4539 passes. That wraps up bills for final passage tonight. Move on to tabled bills. Is there any action that needs to happen on either of the tabled bills?
I'd like to remove Bill 4508 from the table.
Bill Number 4508 has been motioned second to be removed to the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is back on the table.
We are, the ad hoc committee, pretty much concluded this evening, and so Greg Dorman will, there's some changes, not really major, but minor changes that we worked out, and Greg will be reintroducing the bills, along with some other bills that we worked on at the next council meeting.
So do we want to-
So we're advised to delete this, or what do we do?
Remove this bill? Withdraw this bill?
You removed it. You can go ahead and now withdraw it.
Okay, I make a motion to withdraw.
All right. Do we have four?
Yes.
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 Concur.
Like the record show, we have four to concur to withdraw this bill.
And that would be Councilman White, Councilman Hollander, Councilman Hammond, and Councilman Brazel.
So that bill has been withdrawn. Any further tabled bill movement? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements and miscellaneous. Is there anyone, anyone would like to make any announcements tonight?
I have an announcement. It is the 8th Annual Defiance Christmas Parade this Saturday, and last year we had over 100 floats. It actually has turned out to be a pretty spectacular event, so we welcome everybody to come down. It starts at 12. Try to get there at 11, and we have Santa Claus and a lot of stuff for kids, candy, a lot of candy is tossed from the floats, and cookies, and all kinds of stuff. And there will be some wine drink, too, in the wine industry, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Wine drinking in the wine industry.
Free samples.
Free at Brazel's.
Yeah, so we welcome everybody to come down and be there about 11.
Excellent. Anyone else have anything? I would make the announcement again that our meeting in December, which is next week, so we will have back-to-back meetings.
December 4.
December 4, that meeting will be held at the Family Arena. Will not be here. It will be at the Family Arena. That is posted on the website, and I'm sure we will continue to promote that, to let everybody know that we are going to be meeting at the Family Arena. We will have a work session. The budget work session will happen at 5:30, and then we will turn right around and run into the regular meeting that we will have.
At 7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock. Any further questions?
If the, if the special meeting for why we're going to Family Arena, is that, if that's a chance to be canceled, are we going to move back here, or do you know?
As of right now, I don't know that.[1724.03]